Pre-meeting pompadour.
Exactly.
How'd you know?
The second was good.
All right, we are ready. Good evening and welcome to the work session for the Cleveland Heights, University Heights City School District for Tuesday, the 16th of September 2025. Ms. Latham, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hanks?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Mr. Trumbo?
Here.
Mrs. Crenshaw?
Here.
And now I will entertain a motion to consider the consent agenda.
What motion do we consider? The consent agenda.
Second.
Who's faster?
All right, do we have any comments or questions concerning the rather long consent agenda?
Yeah, on that, on that topic, thank you to the HR team for dealing with a enormous multi-page supplemental and other appointments. It's really great to see. I really enjoy this time of year looking at the supplementalist because it really is a who's who of district talent. There's just so many really great people in this district doing really great work. Two that I wanted to call out is one person joining the team, Alicia Burkle, who's a district parent, who's going to be a vocal music parapro. You know, they say, "Love what you do and you'll never work a day in your life." She won't work a day while she's working with the music department because she loves it and she's awesome. And also, I want to shout out Ms. Kirkland, who has the Leading Ladies supplemental, or one half of it, at Baumgartner. She is back this year from retirement and my daughter did Leading Ladies her sixth grade year and it was a really great introduction to making new friends and doing something after school in the building early in the year. And Ms. Kirkland is amazing and I'm so glad that she's back.
Thank you.
I agree. Leading Ladies is a great program. Kelsey did it as well.
There's new things which showed up after I did all my homework. So we're all just catching up here. I'm sorry for the delay.
That's a long list.
It is. It's a very long list.
One thing I will say as we review is that Sean Patton will be working on just our structures for supplementals. We want to track student attendance and impact and all those things. So A, we want to make sure that we're getting the word out about the opportunities for kids and B, you know, we really want to make sure that students are participating consistently and we're supporting that as much as we can, you know, as a district. So we'll, we'll be looking, looking at that closely.
We have an inkling that participation in extracurriculars helps
Exactly.
Your academic career, but
Yeah.
We need to see if the data supports that.
Yeah, because we see it as a support to a lot of the things we're going to talk about tonight.
For sure.
Academic achievement, you know, engagement, attendance, like all those pieces are connected to being connected to those activities and we have really wonderful ones. But sometimes you can have so many, it's hard to get the word out. So we want to keep kind of pushing that. So students can take advantage of these opportunities to do these things.
And this is the time of year where we declare transportation impractical for certain students who, in our community, who attend private schools. And that results in a payment to the parents to offset the cost of transport, transporting their own children because we have such a shortage of drivers and times for bus routes to actually work. So the beginning of the school year, we get a big, big batch of these.
Is that a flat fee?
It is.
Yes.
Does anyone know what it is?
Ms. Latham, can you remind us what that number is? I have a number in memory, but it's probably old.
So that, what the number is for?
Transportation in lieu.
Yeah, the payment in lieu of transportation.
So it changes every year.
That's why I didn't want to say a number.
Yeah, it's set by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. But I will find that number for you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Nope. Okay, then Ms. Latham, we are ready for a vote.
Mr. Trumbo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Hanks?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
And I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Kirby for strategic plan update.
All right, I'm going to invite Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Reed, Ms. Barr, Ms. Byrd, Mrs. Ladell Anderson, Mr. Robert Swager, Mrs. Toya Robinson Snowden. I know the people will be coming in and out, but thank you all for leading our work session today, which is on Goals 1 and 2 of our strategic plan.
All right, just getting it set up here. I like your glasses. Yeah. All right, thanks for giving us a second to set up here. So, good evening, everyone. As we mentioned, we're here tonight to provide an update on Goals 1 and 2. And over the course of this session, we're going to be reviewing progress, identifying priorities and aligning our next steps with our goals that we've established for the district. This meeting is an important opportunity for us to come together, reflect on where we are and where we're moving forward in a way that best serves our students, staff, and community. So we're going to go ahead and get started. As we've already mentioned, we do have a full team here tonight, if my clicker would work, and maybe it's not now. They did earlier. Hold on. There it goes. We do have a full team here tonight to present to you. I myself, Chief Academic Officer. We also have Dr. Hannah Reed, Instructional Specialist and District Learning Coach. We also have with us Lindsay Barr, Coordinator of Student Services, Ms. Allison Byrd, Director of Data Research and Assessment, Ms. Karen Ladell Anderson, Director of Student Services, and Mr. Robert Swager, Director of College Career and Readiness. And then we have Ms. Toya Robinson Snowden, our Coordinator for Gifted Services and Fine Arts. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank each of our team members for their leadership and expertise they bring to us tonight. And together, we're going to go ahead and walk you through key updates and priorities of our strategic plan. We do, we have provided, as we have in the past, a glossary of terms. Of course, I'm not going to read these to you, but these are updated. We do have some things that we took out and also some things that are related to our presentation tonight. So if you come up with something, with some of that edgy speak that you, you'll hear tonight, we do have a reference for you. And like I said, that's on the next three slides. Okay, so we're going to turn it over and start with some data points. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Allison Byrd, who is going to walk us through the next section of slides.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Is the volume okay?
Yeah.
All right. So this is a precursor to the state report card presentation that will be coming to you in October. As you are aware, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce released the school year 2425 report cards on Monday. So while we will be updating you on work that occurred towards the end of last school year and an update this year, the October work session will go more in depth into the state report card. Gave me the clicker.
Can I interrupt and say hooray for the big increase in our state stars and the Career and Tech Ed Consortium hitting five stars was pretty fantastic as well.
Of course, we will receive that.
Two very good pieces of news I got this morning.
A lot of hard work and, and effort goes into that, a little trial and error and some mistakes in learning. And again, you'll hear some of that work today and then again in the October session. This particular slide refers to the broad goals from our strategic plan 2026. And what you know, we are in that school year 2526. So, and then the subsequent, subsequent slides, I'm going to provide an update of just where we are across these five areas. So when we think about the target of 100% of third graders reading at or above grade level, as of the close of the 25 school year, we are at just about 68% of third graders. And that's showing proficiency on the Ohio State Test for English Language Arts for third graders. There is another component from the state report card for the early literacy component that looks at specifically at the reading portion, and 64% of our third graders were proficient solely on reading. The second point is around proficiency also on the state tests. The target for the end of the strategic plan is 80%. And right now, when we look at collective performance, 48, almost 49% of students show proficiency on the Ohio State Tests. And while it's not at our target, that is an increase compared to the previous school The third broad goal is around success in Algebra I. This does include students who take Algebra I at the middle school level, so students in seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade. We had 406 students who attempted to earn Algebra I credit in, at one of our schools. 68% of them earned all of the credit that they attempted, focusing specifically on the class of 2028. Those would be our ninth graders, 61% of them earned all of the credits that they attempted. There is a link on this page for proficiency on state assessments. I keep saying you will, we will go into a deeper dive in the October session, but that does provide a, a chart of all the tests that the students took and how we performed on them. One of the things that's highlighted in that particular document is not only are we improving compared to last school year, but in some of the areas, we are exceeding our pre-COVID Rounding out the 2026 strategic plan goals, one of the targets is 95% of students will graduate in four years. So what is reported on this most recent school year 25 report card reflects the performance of the class of 24, and 90.2% of that class graduated. And then looking at our students being prepared to pursue college or a viable career, you can see the update there around those from the class of 24 who entered college anytime after graduation. So that rate is at 51%. And then my partner, Mr. Swager, will give an update on the CCWMR, or College Career Workforce and Military Readiness component, to talk about how kids are performing and the work that the adults are doing behind that.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. So these are the two, as we've mentioned, we're going over Goals 1 and 2. I think it's important to just go through those. Often, these are interchanged. So just to take a moment to really talk about what each goal is and just to remind our audience how they're separated out a little bit. So Goal 1, we're really talking about expectations, proficiency, and mastery. So in this goal, we're looking and focusing on every student graduating and ready to succeed in a college career. And then Goal 2 is focused on equity, empowerment, and opportunity. So in this goal, we're emphasizing providing excellent education to each student and every student in classroom through multiple pathways. So as we go through this presentation tonight, we are going to, of course, start with Goal 1 and then we'll move into Goal 2. So as I mentioned with Goal 1, we do have our next slide, slides following this, excuse me, that will cover Goal 1. One of the things that you'll notice is that it is linked, we do have objectives in this goal that was laid out when the strategic plan was developed. We're not going to go through those right now, but they're there for your reference. So when we think about Goal 1, we're showing, we want to show how our work under Goal 1 is supported through multiple complementary elements. So in this simple graphic, it illustrates two interconnected components. And on one side, we have our resources such as high-quality instructional materials, assessments, additional supports. And on the other side, we're, we're adding that to our core instructional approach. So they're linked together to show how they work in combination. So we have this visual to represent how these two elements work together. And as we dive into our work to support outcomes, essentially, it's not just about the resources we provide alone, but success comes from how we're combining high-quality instructional materials, aligned assessments, and additional student supports to provide the tools along with high-quality, strong instructional approach. So it's our tools on one hand, and it's our instructional approach in the other. So I just want to break down some of the resources we focus on here in the district when we think about tools to provide students with success and to maximize that success. So we, we've heard a lot about, you know, we have high-quality instructional materials. These are our adopted resources. Recently, we had ELA in math, of course. Then we also provide pacing guides and other updates for teachers to support the movement through the curriculum. We also, like I just mentioned, we had weekly guys, guides that align our pacing and anchor content areas we'd like to focus on week by week. We also have, through the help of Dr., excuse me, Allison Byrd's office, we have a district testing calendar along with assessment tools and other protocols to help people make the best, make, make the best instructional decisions based on assessment results. And then we also have vendor-provided opportunities that leverage these resources. We have MTSS framework that includes practices and tools to support student learning. So ultimately, these resources work together to provide teachers with student, and students with structured, high-quality resources and supports to help ensure every student can meet the expectations and achieve proficiency or higher. On the other side, we have something that we, when we think about core instructional approach, we have something new to the district this year, and it's something we're calling our CHUH Evergreen Core Instructional Priorities. So with this list, we want to think of how it grounds us to serve as a guidepost for what we strive to achieve in all of our classrooms. It also provides a greater focus for our professional learning, feedback cycles, and goal setting. So I'm going to give you a moment to, to read through those. It is a lot. I sort of wrestled in my head if I want to read these to you or not, but you guys could read these. One of the things, as you go through, you'll notice that it is very comprehensive to the different things that we do here in the district. And when we think of the different programs that we have brought in, or different consultants that we've brought in, or different frameworks we've brought in, there are things that, that we focus on that those resources help us with. So as an example, Clarity for Learning ensures teachers and students have a clear understanding of learning targets and success criteria. So you can see how that maybe works into, well, works into the first priority. Clarity also touches on many other of these priorities. Also, Student Center Coaching provides ongoing personal support for teachers to refine their practice. And of course, we have Avid Strategies that build on student skills, academic habits, and college and career readiness. So when you think of things like, like one of the priorities, following a consistent classroom structure for organization, or every student includes at least one opportunity for student-to-student academic discourse. These are many of the things that, like Avid, really focuses on. And as we, we'll talk a little bit more later in the presentation, how a lot of things that we'll be doing with, in fact, Clarity is coming up next week for approximately 170 of our teachers collectively now. And there's, there's at least six or seven of these priorities that we touch upon within the Clarity work. So these really are things that anchor us and allows us to really make them our own and things that are really what we call Evergreen. That's why we call them Evergreen.
Dr. Jenkins, since you mentioned the Clarity cohort of teachers and you just said 170, is that now about a quarter of our teachers, a third of our teachers?
Yeah, it's, it's approximately a quarter.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So we had approximately 65 returning Clarity 1 teachers. Now they're in Clarity 2. And what we now micro-credentialed in our district, we have these micro-credentials, they're now considered Clarity 1 practitioners. We kind of gave them this cool little badge they put on their email signature. They're pretty excited about that. So they're returning for Clarity 2. And then we have an additional, approximately 100 teachers diving into Clarity 1, which is, be their first experience with the Clarity work, and that's coming up next week. So, so we are excited to have that many teachers jump onboard this work. And I'd imagine it's still growing. So we will run this, you know, continually. So even, you know, we're, we're ready to take on even more. So we're excited about that.
Do you say the majority of them are at the elementary level or do they, is it a good?
So we, we had probably heavier elementary last year, but we have, I think, and Dr. Reed, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 12 additional high school teachers.
22 additional.
22. I was way off. Thank you for correcting me.
I just counted them today.
Should be another two, so at 10. And that's better even. So 22 teachers from the high school now joining that work is pretty significant, considering the impact that we are already seeing, you know, in teacher practice. We, not to get ahead of ourselves, but we, not only is the Clarity work anchored in these instructional priorities, but it's also becoming, you know, part of all the things that we're giving feedback on and we're looking for. So we're being really strategic and comprehensive about supporting the work and allowing it to grow naturally amongst teachers through efficacy, which is really important. You know, teachers feeling like they have those mastery moments and they're feeling like it's making a difference. So we're allowing space for that, and that's really important.
I really appreciate the intentionality of it because for a long time, there were programs in this district that were seen as the program of the year, and the next year would be a different program, and then the next year would be a different program. And there was a lot of whiplash that people were feeling.
Welcome to Public Ed.
So, but it seems like the Clarity work has been introduced and it's been something that we realize takes a while, but we're not forcing it in a year and then going, oh, that didn't work, and then moving to the next, something different the next year. So I really appreciate the intentionality and the adoption being done in a way where I think people can actually embrace it and move forward with it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that feedback. And that's aligned with, with our intention, with how we rolled it out. One thing you had said that I just want to build on just for a moment, you had said about, you know, just referencing how we bring in programs and they're like the flavor of the month.
Right.
Flavor of the year, the next new thing, the next buzz. And that's not what we're doing here. We're establishing what it is that we expect and strive for in our classrooms for all students, regardless of content area, grade level, and even, you know, this would apply to any grade level, right? Any content area. So the idea would be that things like Clarity for Learning and bringing consultants in and, and the idea, like bringing, you know, people like Diane Sweeney in for Student Center Coaching, they're supporting this work. So we will always be able to support this work through various resources, but it's not the framework that's, that's, that's sort of dictating what we're doing. It's, we are in control of that. And then we're using even multiple resources for a priority or two to lift this up and to support teachers, bringing this alive in their classroom. This has also given teachers opportunity to think about, like, what are some things that I want to work on? What are some things that I can, I feel pretty strong with? You know, so it's creating space for dialogue about their own growth and their own goal setting. And again, if it's something like, well, you know, I don't know if all my students know what I'm trying to teach, or if they even know what success even looks like, well, maybe jumping on, you know, getting involved in the Clarity work will help them with that. So that's the idea, and that's the kind of engagement that we really are looking for, which is more long-lasting and authentic.
Yeah, it, it feels more long-lasting and authentic, just hearing
Right.
You know, I've heard you talk about it now for two years now.
Yeah.
And it seems more pervasive in a good way, in, in that it, it will actually stick.
Yeah. Tagging on to what Jody just said, as I looked at the slide in prep for this meeting, the one thing that really struck me was, I mean, if you're really kind of in the weeds with this stuff, you can look at this list and go, oh, that's from Avid and that's, that's from Clarity. And that you're, it's kind of like you've went down the buffet line and sort of picked out the things that our district finds the most value in, which I think is really great. It's not just like an off-the-shelf playbook that you just throw at the staff and say, run this. It's, you're, we're, you know. So I did not want this to be a checklist. Yeah. I did not want it to be, I was really worried about that, actually, to be honest. I was like, I had a lot of reservations. So the buffet line, yes. I've been in this district for a long time and I've seen different initiatives and I've seen different things stick and different things that we like, we, we tend to focus on, the things that are, like, critical to, to us collectively. And, you know, when I sat and thought about, well, what are all the things that a Cleveland Heights, we, we expect from a Cleveland Heights teacher? What we, what we really want to see in all of the Cleveland Heights, University Heights classroom? So there is a little bit of Avid in here. There is a little bit of, there's even explicit instruction in here. There's a little bit of Clarity for Learning, and there's different, so this encompasses all those things, brings it to one focal point. And under this, as you can imagine, if you go in the, there's a lot of detail that we can pull out. And in fact, we were meeting with Cara Vandess and Diane Sweeney, who, who are coming into our district in the next couple of weeks, and we were talking about this, and they said, you could spend a whole year on two or three of these, unpacking it, and what does that look like strategically in the classroom? So we, we've had a really good response from the people, the outside external resources that are supporting us, and we've had some good response internally within academic services to this. So it's been good. So I, I'm glad that I went out on a limb, and I was like, okay. And we put that out there, so it's being well-received, and I appreciate that feedback.
I'm happy to hear that significantly more high school teachers are joining the Clarity work, because when we were in Boise, I saw a very different way of approaching high school teaching there, which I think our students could benefit from.
We are excited. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Reed, who's going to talk a little bit more in depth for the CNI department.
Good evening. So going back to that, those core Evergreen priorities, it has really grounded CNI's work and helped us with our grade-level team meetings to ground what we're doing in our high-quality instructional materials. So if you look, last year, we, we adopted our new math program, and then the year before, we had our new English program. So now what we're really focusing on this year is what are the resources and routines that are available in those programs that can really support those core instructional practices and, and priorities in that Evergreen priority? So our grade-level team meeting is all around our high-quality instructional materials. For ELA, we're really digging into Wonders and the 95%, and then My Perspectives, and then for math, we're really digging into the Into Math program. So we are also continuing with our weekly updates. Every week, the CNI department puts together pacing guides of where you should be during this week, and we send those out. Our last one that we sent out last week had 1,000, over 1,000 hits on it. So we know the teachers are using it, and they're accessing it, and they, they like it. I was talking to coaches today who said they're using it when they go in to coach with, with teachers to say, this is where we should be. So I think those are, are having an impact in terms of making sure that we're staying on pace with our curriculums. This year, we are piloting four new science programs. So last year in February, we were contacted by HMH, who does our current Science Fusion program. They will no longer support the program after 26, 27 school year. So we are sort of in a situation where we're forced to find something new to adopt. So we are piloting Amplify Science at elementary and Inspire Science, which is McGraw-Hill. And then in middle school, they're doing TCI, Science Alive, and Inspire Science at the middle school. And then the high school is piloting Inspire Science, and they're looking at an open source resource called OpenSciEd. And so they are kind of looking to see where they can bring in some of that stuff also with it. And there are lots of options with the OpenSciEd to, to buy books and to purchase things through other publishers. So we're kind of exploring this year, where we are doing the pilot for the whole first semester. So they've all started. We had a couple of glitches with materials, but there's one more pile of materials here that are, will be delivered, and then they'll be ready to go. So we'll be meeting in October to kind of start our conversation around what do we like, what don't, do we, you know, not like so much? A lot of it is hands-on. The science curriculums have really turned to that idea of claim reasoning and evidence, and then that hands-on manipulatives and things like that. So all of these programs came with huge science kits, and so they're did kind of dig it into the science kits and, and using them. So we will.
How many teachers are piloting?
Right now, we have, there are five at the elementaries, and actually, I'm sorry, five teams, so that usually, excuse me, I have a flight. There's, um.
We're all battling it.
It's, right. It's a teams of teachers that are doing it, so that would, 10, 11, depending on how many are on the team. But we're, we're doing all grade levels. In the middle school, our seventh-grade teams are piloting, and our eighth grade, sixth grade and eighth grade, and seventh grade is, one of them's doing it. Some of them are still doing Science Fusion, because we want to be sure that we're seeing that. And then at the high school, we have two biology teachers, environmental, two environmental science teachers, and one chemistry teacher. So they're, they're taking a look at that in the Inspire Science. So those are all pilots that are happening, and I have a list if you need who's doing what where.
No, I'm just, I want to get a sense of sort of how broad the pilot will be.
So we looked at, we looked at about 15 different programs.
Mm-hmm.
And these were the ones that, that they picked to, to pilot within their classrooms based on what they saw with the next-generation science standards and all of that, so.
Is there a, is there a general desire from the department to pick a single publisher or vendor to go from kind of grade to grade? Because I've seen with the math curriculum, that's been, as on the parent side of things, it's been really nice when you go from year to year and things are like, ah, okay, we're, you know, I know where to look for this, and, you know, my daughter knows where to look for it, too, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we've been talking about that. So all three grade levels are, are all doing Inspire Science, which is the McGraw-Hill. We'll, we'll take a look at it and see what happens at the end and where it all fits. They're really looking, we would like, you know, the programs that best fit their needs, but I think there is some advantage that, we'll, we'll see how that kind of works out. And I think that our Into Math program is kind of influencing that, because they're seeing the continuity of that, so.
Awesome.
Okay. So then, in terms of the tools and resources for families that we're using, we're finding within our HQIM that there are lots of resources for teachers to use in terms of, you know, sending home extra practice on things, manipulatives. So a lot of teachers are using those and sending those out to keep communication open with parents. And then, of course, we have things like Class Dojo and those things. And so we're, we're able to, you know, keep in touch with families through our HQIMs. And again, it's looking at those resources that are in our HQIMs that are already there and created that really support what we're doing in the classroom. And then in terms of assessments, Joyce Bukovac, our instructional specialist for math, sat down with a group of teachers this summer to really talk about, like, how did things go last year with our first year of implementation? And they made some adjustments based on the Ohio State test of where we need to place things, and did things need to be moved a little bit? There were no major changes. It was more just kind of moving things around. And then they rewrote the assessments, the interim assessments that go with that, so we're all aligned again. And those new pacing guides are up on the website and have been communicated with teachers. And we're just continuing to use those interim assessments and the Ohio benchmarks and the Ohio Assessment System to kind of get those check-ins at the end of each quarter and semester to make sure that we're on track with our kits. Okay. Oh, I have the clicker.
The clicker.
There you go.
All right. Thanks so much. All right, so we're going to shift a little bit and talk about ELL students and support for them. So one of the things that, for last year, we had 46 students, 46% of our students meet their growth goal, which is shy of our just about 54% or 57, 53.7% target. So that was, that equated to about six more students that would have needed to have, have met their goal for, for us to reach our, our target. So I want to talk a little bit about what we do for our ELL, within our ELL program. So we do have push-in and pull-out services with our EL paraprofessionals and our title lead teachers. That's what we had for last year. We also, excuse me, have Lexia Learning for our ELL students, for students in our ELL program, including an at-home access for K3 students. So we also provide transition support for testing when it's allowable. We have our Avid Emerge and Targeted Language Acquisition Instruction at our middle schools. We also have our piloting Pocket Talk device for student use. And then we do provide training for our title leads and ELL professionals on Lexia and ELL strategies. So those were things that we had in place last year, and we continue to have them for the 25, 26 school year. While continuing these, we are excited to have an additional TESL-certified teacher join our, our staff. And he has been wonderful, Mr. Wells, and he's fantastic. He's partnering with our family engagement specialists and other partnerships to also link how we can support students, but also the families as well. So he came into our district really excited, and, you know, he has since then created a very detailed schedule to get to all the buildings and provide supports. And along with his, some of his direct services to students, he's also providing just support for the paraprofessionals in that role, and something that we felt that we really needed to have in place. And of course, being TESL-certified, he brings in a level of expertise to our support throughout the whole district that we really needed. We do have a TESL-certified teacher at the high school, Kathleen Scully, who's been instrumental in the past in helping us even upgrade our handbook and things like that. So we also, it was great, she was part of the hiring process, the interview, on the interview team. So they're already, of course, a great partnership, and they're meeting, and they're working together. So now there's a team of teachers.
Yes.
Supporting our students in our ELL program.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there a state reason that we call it English Language Learning? Is there anything that prevents us from using a different term?
So, so technically speaking, our, it's, the name of our program is English Language Learners. So in other words, coming in, you know, that's the language they're, that's what they're tested on, is the acquisition of the English language. I don't think, and I'll double-check, that there is anything that prevents us from calling, calling it something that, that we choose at a, at a district level.
I've just heard.
But, yeah.
Several districts around the country, both at the conference in Los Angeles, and when we were in Boise, people have changed terminology to multi-language learners to sort of reflect the fact that children are not only learning English, they're also learning the math and the science and the social studies, and they're parallel processing.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
In both their first language and in English.
And it is something we could explore. Yes.
The report card calls it English learner progress. That's a technical term.
Right. And they, presumably, the report card has a definition for what that is.
Yeah.
But as far as the name of our program here in Cleveland Heights, University Heights, we may have some liberties there.
It might be a better reflection of what's happening. It's just something to consider, because we know that they're learning all sorts of stuff.
Right. No doubt.
Do we provide any resources for parents or families of the students?
We do. And what we, the, with those resources that we provide, and a lot of it's translation services, we have Propio, and we have some other, you know, tools. We'd also partner with, with families on a, you know, if they are requesting it, you know, of course, we're going to be there for them to assist them. I think we, we need to continue to grow in that area and think about what the needs are specifically. What's really nice is with our added, added staff member, added TESL teacher, Mr. Wells, he can really be on that forefront, working directly with families and helping us determine how we can better our program in terms of that school-family connection.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It might be something to explore. I know we have a partnership with Tri-C, and they have a program for, I think it's called ESL. And it is, they, they have one that costs, but there is also one that is free. So since we have a partnership, that might just be something to explore, to give a holistic approach to not just the student, but the family as well.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, what's, because what's exciting is, is that last year, when we really dug in, and I have to give credit to Amanda Zapatekney, who is doing great, by the way. I got a picture of her baby in the mail yesterday. It was awesome. She's beautiful, Autumn. She didn't mind me saying that.
Please pass our best over to her.
Yes, yes, sir. And, yeah, so we're staying in touch with her and everything, but I just really have to give kudos to her, because she was instrumental in us, like, digging back in and say, you know, this handbook's not good, you know? And she just, like, rolling her sleeves up and, you know, making sure that that was updated and was really advocating for us to do a better job. And I just give her credit for that. And we, you know, and, and here we are, and we are doing a better job. And I think we'll continue to grow in that area, and that's something else to consider. So I appreciate that feedback. Yeah. Great. And just a little bit more info. So we do have a wide range of first-language speakers, and this, of course, the majority is Spanish over the last three years, but this does give us the different languages spoken. I don't know if you guys can read that, and it was really small.
So I was curious, what is not in option list?
So this is all.
These are languages we don't know what to do with?
So this is directly from the survey we give parents. So that was something that they had a choice of, so we're not sure why that was selected. So that was.
Okay. And then English is also one of the languages over there towards the right of your graph.
Yeah, along the same lines, that was an option for them to choose.
So these are presumably people who speak English and something?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Correct. And then just to give you some breakdown of enrollment numbers, there they are. So over the last three school years, you could see that we moved up a little bit in '24, '25, and then we trended down a little bit, but pretty much staying around the same. We do have three pending students being screened. And again, these are students that are in our, in our ELL program, that we call for now. But this wouldn't necessarily be students that at one point weren't in an ELL program or in a program in a different district, or, you know, this is just students that were served, we are identi, have identified as ELL students that are in our program.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Have we been able to measure yet, or have we been doing our, our program long enough to measure how long a student stays in it before they're able to exit?
That's a really good question, and that we can get back to you on. I like that question. If I understand the question, that is, how long are they from, from the beginning of when they enter the program versus exit? It also depends on their, the, their, the score that they actually receive at the level in which they come into the program. So, so the, so, I mean, a lot of the results would be the main indicator of that, and that would tell us what level of language, English acquisition they have at that time. So students that are higher up on that language acquisition prob, may not, may not need to be in the program as long as some students who come in who really have very little English and, you know, they're learning as they are in the program. So, but that is a good, you know, relative to the level in which they come in, how long does it trend for them to exit? And I do like that. That's a good question.
It's also an interesting, it would be interesting to know, I, I think that very often folks, as they're arriving, are sort of transient. You know, they, they'll come, they'll land, they'll get settled, and then they may very well move on. And so it may be that a significant number of these people are not with us as long as other kids are. You know, so we do the best that we can while we have, send them off to do great work elsewhere.
Another thing that's really interesting about Gabe's question to me is, on the state report card, non-native English speakers get, is it three years or something like that? There's a, there's like an exemption window for when people enter the, the district, is it three years, I think?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, you know, when I see this, this graph here, thinking, you know, some of these people who are still receiving services may well be outside of that window and are in the math that goes into our report card score. Just, just another data point to add in there. The other thing that strikes me as I look at this graph, and it's, it's good that I don't think Nancy or Lisa are here, because this would be like a don't think Nancy or Lisa are here because this would be like a job for them, would be, if we aren't already, it'd be really great to do some sort of get-together with all the families of all of the different languages represented on this chart. And, you know, have some sort of event, you know, at one of the buildings, get folks together and have some
And it will have to involve food.
Yeah, have some community building. Yeah, potluck. Yeah.
That was actually something that we had mentioned organizing before. I don't think we got a chance to do it last year, but, you know, we'll follow up with them on, on, because there were a couple of families who had said they would kind of assist with that that we had met with. So that's something we can follow up.
There, when, when Olivia was at Noble, particularly her younger years at Noble, the Nepali-speaking population at, in the building was, was pretty large. And there was a parent that would do the Nepali announcements or like the, when robocalls would come home, there'd be like the Mr. Carpenter one, and then the phone would ring right after and it'd be the Nepali version, like back to back.
Oh, yeah. She worked, there was someone who worked at the school too.
She worked at the district for several years.
Yeah. She was also a parent though of a kid in the, in the school.
Yeah, when I was at Garrity, we had a parent who would translate all the like notes that went home from the principal into Spanish.
I, I do want to mention one thing related to your question as well, and something that even Dr. Reed can probably talk to about a little bit. With the high quality instructional materials we've adopted, there are a lot of, I believe, resources for ELL students and even opportunities for translation too. So there's that as well. And I think it's important for us to draw a line to it so that, you know, even like with Mr. Wells or even any of the teachers are working with students, we can make sure we're fully utilizing those resources too. Yeah.
So you sort of answered the question I was thinking about in your response to Gabe's question, but a student shows up in one of our buildings whose first language is not English. The process is some sort of a test to see how much English that student has. And then based on that placement in the ELL program. And how do we know when they roll off? There's specific goals.
So we, so with Lexia, we have screeners. That's our main re, high-quality instructional material that we use within that program to help with, you know, progress monitoring of those students and their progress.
That's an online program, Mike?
What's that?
Is that an online program?
There, it is an online resource and also has printed materials, I believe. Yeah. And then with our ALPA testing, which is the state testing, that is primarily what we use ultimately to determine if a student is exited or remains in the ELL program.
Okay. So that's determined by this state test?
Correct. Correct. So Lexia would be like our local measure that we would use to determine where students are and how the progress they're making. But then the ALPA test would be the ultimate measure by the state as to what level of language acquisition they have.
Thank you.
So I would also really just love to know, I, this is the first that I've heard that, that when a student arrives, you have a couple of, you have a period of time when their work is not part of those report card? I'd love to know more about that.
Yeah. I was on the website, the Odoo website this afternoon and I, there was a footnote somewhere that said.
Another thing that it's important just for folks who don't do this every day, to be reminded that when a, a student comes, you know, to a new school, let's say that they're, you know, 15 and they're, they're coming from Central America, they don't know much English, but that also, that does not mean that they can read in Spanish. And so it makes, it adds a whole nother layer because, you know, the inclination would be to get them resources in Spanish. But very often, if they're coming from, I mean, if they're here, they're, they've left home for a reason. And they've often been on the run. And, you know, refugees have very sporadic education opportunities. And so it's, there, there are layers of things going on and, you know, and just
And that's connects to what Gabe was saying, that
Yeah.
we need to make sure we're providing as much support as possible for the families at home, not just the children who are in our buildings. Because the parents are trying to navigate a new world and a new language and they may not have the skills to do it.
Yeah. And, you know, just sort of, sometimes I like to throw a little bit of local history into the discussion. This is something that we have a long history with in this district. When I was very small, I'd come, at the old Coventry Elementary School, billowing coal smoke, as I remember. There was a woman named Mrs. Eisenstadt, who, you know, at the time, the, the kids coming in from abroad were Eastern Europeans. And she did incredible work with those kids. And we were a destination district, actually. We were well-known for easing the transition for, for those families into the United States. It was a, I mean, and, you know, that's the sort of thing that we should take great pride in and continue to lean in because these are people who are deserving of the work. Come here for a reason.
Real-time follow-up, the, so that, from the Odoo website for, on our report card, it's under the, your district students section, it says, "The number of recently arrived English learner students excluded from accountability for two years was 27, contributing to our most recent." So.
So their third years
They would
then their, their numbers, their test scores roll into our report card?
All right. We're learning together.
And just, just to kind of put a quick bow on this, I think it, I think what I really love about the discussion is that it's not just a, of course, it is, our program is about language acquisition and making sure that students are advancing in that, but it's more than that. It's also what we're providing families and how we're receiving them into the community and the things that we're doing to make them feel supported. And that's why, again, I'm really excited about the introduction of Mr. Wells to the program because, you know, with a lot of experience in, in this community, he actually, he is, lives in Cleveland Heights and he was in a neighboring district for a long time in working in ELL programs. So he brings a lot of local expertise and just expertise in general. So I appreciated that. So I'm excited.
Okay. All right. So good evening, everybody. Now time to talk about everybody's favorite topic, which is graduation and, you know, really what happens to our students as they come through our system and where are they headed after they move? So it's really exciting to just talk about where we have been and where we are. Wanted just to give you a little bit of information. I know the October work session will definitely go into a deeper dive on this, but there's a lot to celebrate and also there's a lot of work to continue. So we actually broke it out, talking about the graduation component, different from the college career workforce military readiness measure because it's not, just because you get one doesn't mean you're going to get the other. And really, there's a lot of different ways that you can meet this. I know we've had special board sessions just to talk about the college career workforce military readiness, but this is the first time that the, the rating will actually hit our report card. So I know this will be a fun opportunity to just share some information. But just when we think about graduation, we're constantly trying to get to our strategic plan goal of 95% students graduating in four years. The state gives us a four and a five-year graduation rate and those are weighted each year. So that way, based on the number of students who complete either in four years or in five years, then it gives us our overall district rating for graduation. When we think about the class of 2024, four-year, we were at 90.2, which is actually just a little bit of a decrease from the 2023 group. When we looked at the class of 2023, five-year, we see that we see a dramatic increase. So, you know, this is not something that's always just completely standard. We know that students have lots of different things that's helped them either graduate on time or might be a hindrance to graduating on time. And I think that as we've talked about, how do we get more consistent with this? A lot of it is talking about where do we meet the student where they are? Like, how do we know when students are coming in in ninth grade? What supports that they need? How do we create some opportunities for acceleration? I know Dr. Jenkins has talked about even some of the, the Avid program components. And when we're asking students to take really challenging courses and we don't give them a support called Avid, which is an acceleration, they might not graduate on time because there's, that is the support that comes along with that program. But when we do it well and we give students an acceleration program that gives them the, the resources to be successful, then they can meet those graduation requirements in time or actually even ahead of time where we start to see students doing better and taking more rigorous courses. One of the next components, we'll talk about AP participation and CCP participation. So again, thinking that as students meet high school graduation requirements, they can double dip. Some of them can get those college credits at the same time. But then many students are just ready for that next stage of their development. So I've got my high school credits under my belt and I'm ready to challenge myself with more rigorous courses. And really, the language will start to even get into what about pre-apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship programs and CTE programs? So there's really the continuum of courses. And really, this gets back to how do we get kids ready? I did want to at least talk about like some of the preliminary information. So I know this won't come out until even like a year from now, but we're anticipating another increase in our four-year graduation rate. And that's based on just making sure that students have a really good graduation plan, a really thorough, successful, or a student success plan. And so we can get them on, on time and on target. A lot of that is through the TASSL program. I know, just to bring that back around, and I appreciate everybody's advocacy when the state was considering cutting our 21st Century Grant Program. That would have cut our TASSL program. So we think about how many
Federal government.
Correct. Correct. But either way, like state and federal government, right? This is important that we're advocating because those were dollars that help our students get back on track. It helps close gaps. So we have a gap closing measure. And without having gap closing programs, then we wouldn't be able to do some of the work. So I do appreciate everybody stepping up this summer. I know that that was a big lift and thank you all for helping out with that. So when we think about the college career workforce military measure, that's something that will be new. We have a rate from 2023, but it was not, it didn't count in the measure. We did not receive that on our report card, but it was for informational purposes only. We do have the class of 2024 rate, which came in at 63.2%. And we're still working on our 2025 rate. So that won't be until what happens this time next year. But we're still trying to make sure that we are cleaning data, making sure that we've got good record-keeping and that we can get kids through that measure. So that will be something that we'll continue to work on and build those systems. And that's really the, the next step is develop and implement a system of tracking that student performance. I think right now, as the measure has been new, a lot of it is like, okay, this happens in junior and senior year, but it doesn't have to. So we're really trying to develop this in, you know, freshman sophomore year. And what does it look like for students to even earn industry-recognized credentials not in 11th and 12th grade year? But there are models where we can implement that. So I think that's been asking us to really challenge our own thinking about this and design programming and, and certification programs for students that might not be the concentrator like we might typically think about them in terms of CTE. And so that's our goal, is to have students increase, have an increase in the number of students who meet at least one of the 11 components. So unlike other components, you don't get bonus points. If you meet two out of the 11 or three out of the 11, as long as you meet one, that's the, that's the measure.
Do you, can you rattle off what these 11 components are?
Yeah.
No?
This is a test.
Well, I can get pretty close.
Or give us a rough idea.
I can get pretty close. So this is students that get a remediation-free score on SAT or ACT. I cannot give you those numbers off the top of my head.
No, that's all right. Those ones, that's familiar.
So that's a big one. We've got the number of students that complete pre-apprenticeship programs, students who've signed up for apprenticeship programs, students who earn 250 hours of work-based learning and meet their Ohio means jobs readiness seal, students that meet 12 industry, industry-recognized credential points.
Through the CTE programs?
Or through our Rise Up credentialing program. So that's, it doesn't always have to be CTE, but it does have to be 12 points in a concentrated career field.
One area.
One area.
Okay.
And, oh, there's the other one. AP scores. Time for your AP scores. AP scores, you have to get three or threes or better on three or more AP tests.
Right.
And then you can also sign your enlistment papers. I think that I got them all.
Any idea how many kids enlisted last year?
Well, that's the part that we're working through. Because, and, and I'll be honest, like you would think that that's easy. It is not easy to get documentation of, even if a student and family do sign those papers, for us to get it requires an additional layer of finagling. So, or if a student's like, yep, I'm going to do that. And it's like, okay, you have an appointment? Yep, I have an appointment. Okay. Did you go to that appointment? So there's a lot, just, just trying to make sure. And that's why when we think about this, a lot of it is like that system piece of tracking that. We may have had students do that. And actually, when we talked to the school counselors and the principals, they're like, yeah, we had like four kids do that last year. And we're like, well, do we have the documentation of that? And they're like, well, we don't. Well, it's like, well, then it's like, it didn't happen. So it's a lot of
It might have happened, but you don't know.
Developing those systems, right? And, and so that's why even as we think about like where we are with that rate, understanding that we're in year two of that, and it's like, yes, we're going to continue to build some of those systems that allow for us to efficiently attract that. Just like we have built systems for students earning the Rise Up credentials as a pathway, alternative pathway to graduation. It's only through implementation that we realize that our systems are good or our systems are not good. So we want to continue to build that.
And did you mention that SAT participation is one of the components?
They're not participation, but they have to get the remediation-free score.
Got it. Okay.
Which, I mean, just to bring that back around, you know, post-COVID, there was the test score optional for students that were moving into four-year degrees. And now the pendulum is swinging back the other way. Where it's like, no, that's not the case anymore. So it's just a matter of bringing all of those 11 components and then making sure that we have options for students. It does help with our pathway development.
Bob, school district that's doing amazing work in this area, particularly in the industry credentials, is Toledo Public Schools.
Oh, yeah, they are.
I saw a presentation they did at OSBA. I go see them every year because it's just amazing, the, the work that they're doing in this area. And they, they will freely invite people to come and see what they're doing. So if you haven't taken a trip out there, I would highly encourage you to do that.
That's great. I have talked to the people in Toledo. I mean, they're also an avid district, so we partner with them in some other professional learning opportunities. But yeah, definitely, it's great to see some of those things and the, the way that they're thinking about it. You know, I think I've heard them develop, it's not just the two-year CT pathway, but it's the four-year and the six-year. And I think that's a really exciting way to think about stacking credentials.
Yeah, yeah. They're doing it in a way that, I mean, obviously, they're a much larger district, so they have more resources, but they're doing it in a way where they want kids to be able to try CTE. And if they don't like it, be able to move in, you know, move in and out so they can try multiple things. Because, you know, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grader doesn't really know yet what they like or what they want to do.
And sometimes The mother of a college student who keeps changing his major, right?
Well, he hasn't changed it for a year.
Okay. But you never Right. You need to try different things to find what it is you want to commit to.
Exactly.
And that's finding a way to make that possible.
Yeah, we have been, you have been explicitly invited to go tour Toledo. They'll put you on a Toledo school bus. They'll take you from facility to facility to facility to facility, you and your whole crew. Chris Varwig, I'll connect you with her.
Thank you.
She's a good friend.
She's fantastic.
Great. She's a
She is. Can you include me in that because I want to connect Dave Wagner as well for the CTPD?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
He's probably interested in a trip too.
Have to.
All right, I'll transition over to hear a little bit about our special populations with Karen Lindell Anderson.
I'm going to have to sit here so I can see. Sorry. I was going to fake it.
Don't fake it.
Happy to help you.
I need a clipper.
It's right there.
Okay. And I'm going to, alrighty. Okay. Well, for goal one with, thank you. Goal one with special populations really looks at the performance of our students with the, with disabilities on the special education profile. And we look at if indicators have been met. There are 54 indicators, which I will not read, but can you, everyone's like, thank you, but can you open that up? It's 54.
That's a lot.
Thank you. Okay, just put it in the presentation. Thank you. Now I might be able to see it. Okay. So the question is, what is the special education profile? It's commonly referred to as the special education report card. And it's basically IDEA requirements in terms of how states monitor performance outcomes for students with disabilities. And as I said, Ohio has 54 indicators that measure services and outcomes. And as I said, Ohio has 54 indicators that measure services and outcomes, which complies with the IDEA requirement. The special ed profile has about seven areas that it kind of covers. It looks at LRE, which is least restrictive environment, preschool outcomes, early childhood transition, assessment participation proficiency, secondary and post-school readiness, compliance timelines, and disproportionality. So these 54 indicators kind of fall into one of these categories. So we're going to take a look at the 54 indicators and our district's performance this past year in terms of if the indicator was met, if we made progress with the indicator, if the indicator was not met, and if the district is at risk as it relates to a particular indicator. Of the 54 indicators, and I know you have this, so you've probably already looked through, we met straight out 27, which left 27 indicators remaining. Of the remaining 27 indicators, we made progress on an additional 12. So just looking at the met indicators, we're glad we met those. But again, it's nice that we continue to make progress with an additional 12 indicators, which leaves 15 remaining indicators. Of those 15 remaining indicators, there were 14 that we did not meet, which leaves one remaining indicator. The final indicator just looks at our disproportionality as it relates to discipline. And this particular indicator is considered an at-risk indicator. And what they ask districts to do is just kind of look at, and again, it's related to discipline and students and in-school suspension. They're asking the district to look at your processes in terms of what's leading to this. And we are looking into that in terms of the overuse of in-school suspension in students with disabilities. So that is an at-risk. We did not not meet the indicator, but we are at risk for next year potentially not meeting that indicator. So of the 54 indicators, just a recap, there were 27 that we met, just boom, outright. But again, that doesn't tell the entire story. There were additional 12 indicators that we made progress on from last year, which gave us 72.22 indicators, in which we consider are positive indicators. There were 14 indicators that were not met, reflecting 25.93%. And then there's one indicator that's at risk, which is 1.85%. Then we have what's referred to commonly as priority indicators, which takes a look at the performance of students with disabilities on the Ohio State Test. These are the gap closing indicators. And what the indicator looks at, it looks at, as opposed to a raw score, it looks at over time from the previous year, are students making progress in terms of closing that gap, getting closer to proficient, as is with their peers? In the area of reading and language arts, you'll see they're looking at fourth grade, eighth grade and high school in terms of proficiency. Students with disabilities met the, we met the requirement in terms of the goals set by the state. What they do to get that goal, they look at the performance across the state. So it's just not, they're just not looking at us. So we're, I hate to say that we're competing, but we're kind of competing with students across the state. So they're looking at that performance of students, they're taking that average, and they'll say, here's the target. And did you make measurable progress from the previous year? And we have for the past five years.
Good.
Just like, yeah, itself, which is like, we're happy about that. In the area of math, again, for fourth, eighth and high school, we met those indicators, again, in terms of meeting progress as it relates to proficiency and the proficiency indicator, and our students with disabilities getting closer in terms of proficiency as it relates to their peers. And we're meeting those, those two, those six are priority indicators, and we're happy that we're meeting those. So we're thrilled about that. And with that, I believe we're going to go back.
I have one question. For the at-risk indicator, what is the data point that's used for that? Is it like the percentage of all students who, what is it, are suspended for 10 days or more? Who have disabilities?
They're looking across the state at students with the disabilities in terms of the use of various forms of discipline. They look at suspension rates, expulsion rates, and then in-school suspension. So as we compare to students across the state, we are at risk in terms of the overuse of in-school suspension.
Do we know what that percentage is?
I can tell you. Let me see if I can get to my at-risk indicator. Give me just a second.
This is very impressive. Reaching to a binder, pulling it out.
Oh. Now he said that, now I feel more pressure. Now I feel the pressure for the at-risk. I'm looking at the indicators, we're supposed to be less than, well, actually, the target is less than or equal to 2.50. And they're just saying the result was 2.50, so we did not meet, you know, so it has to be less than.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's all or nothing with the indicator, so we got to be less than.
And is that 2.5 students, 2.5% of students with disabilities? What is that?
It's what the, what the state is looking at, the percentage of students across the state. So they have a formula to look at, everybody in terms of that use across districts.
So it doesn't actually refer to a specific number of our kids? It's an index compared to the rest of the state?
To everyone else in the state. But honestly, all kidding aside, I can't say that's not, that's, that's an okay thing, honestly, because it's comparing apples to apples in terms of, okay, we have students with disabilities, how are you using this district? How are you using that district? So it benefits us sometimes and sometimes it doesn't. So.
Okay.
The, the number is big enough?
Yes.
That?
Yes, it is.
The law of large numbers does apply.
Yeah, that's true. So, so again.
And I just had one real quick question on indicators. And this is just from my own education around language that the state uses. So indicator six A and B is preschool least restrictive educational environment, regular setting and separate setting? Is separate setting like self-contained?
No. What they're doing, they're looking at, if you're looking at separate setting, it's a setting other than a traditional school. So it could be, they used to say separate facilities. It could be a separate setting, but we're not necessarily in the public school setting.
Got it.
And for those particular indicators, those indicators are IEP team decisions. So there's no corrective action associated with, with the district. We can't tell an IEP team what to do in terms of their decision. They make their unique decisions on a case-by-case basis with each individual child. So there's no corrective action.
The Cleveland Site Center.
Right.
Yes. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, now that we're back here and just in terms of our next steps and our plans for this year moving forward, we're just going to continue to have PD in terms of collaborating with our ESC in terms of what some, we get, we get a lot of good advice from them. We get a lot of good support from them in terms of what to do next. We have IEP compliance training for our new staff and refreshers for existing staff. We're going to continue with Ms. Barr and her teams in terms of working with our co-teaching teams and providing them support and training. And again, just continuing our collaboration with our CNI colleagues. And then just, we do internal IEP monitoring just to ensure that IEPs are as standard based as possible. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, we're, real quick, we're going to transition. This is, this next slide, it's just a quick FYI kind of, because there's been a change in terms of what we call our building plans. So you've heard the acronym BLAP before, I'm sure a million times. So, which is an acronym for Building Level Action Plan. So last year, we did a lot, of course, we always do work with that. I mean, that's the plan that each building has, right? So last year, you know, there was a lot of work around that. One of the things we did last year, we started to create what we call the ONE Plan. You've heard that perhaps. It's been something that was definitely discussed and, and worked on all throughout the spring of last year, actually started in January, so started in the winter. But basically as a result, we've now replaced the BLAP with the ONE Plan. So each building has its own ONE Plan, and the district has a ONE Plan. So there's more than one ONE Plan, if that makes sense.
There's many ONE Plans.
Many ONE Plans.
There might be 11 if my math was right.
So one thing, it's just important to note, as we move forward, not just even like tonight, but just in general, you'll hear ONE Plan quite a bit. So it's instead of BLAP, it's ONE Plan. And the nice thing is with the district ONE Plan is it, it really lays out, we actually have seven different goals, which we won't go through tonight. But it encompasses everything listed here, which if you read, it really is everything. You know, attendance, behavior, literacy, instruction. It also covers some human resources, communication, family engagement, and so on. So within that district ONE Plan, we will have root cause, we'll have three-year goals for students, and even adult measures, action steps along with strategies. So there's a lot there, but I wanted to make the board aware of that. And then, you know, each building, of course, they actually have three goals laid out. So theirs is a little bit more simplified in the sense that comprehensively, we have a lot more in the district goal, ONE Plan, because we're doing so much, right, at the district level. And that's it for goal one. Now we're ready for goal two. So, so we are going to go ahead and get into goal two. As mentioned earlier, this is really talking about how we're promoting equity, empowering students, and expanding opportunities so that all learners can thrive. One thing I wanted to note, that Chief Coleman, I believe, will be presenting at a different evening, different work session, and they'll be expanding that conversation on our equity work and things like that. So tonight is more within academic services and specifically what we're doing. So I just wanted to mention that as we go. And again, like goal one, we have the objectives, for anybody that would like to reference them. And I think we're going to go back to Dr. Reed. And there she is. So here's the clicker.
So in terms of curriculum and instruction and our tier one instructional core, we are really focusing on strengthening that core program that we provide for students. And so in our work with our teachers, we've kind of incorporated those core practices, those Evergreen Core Practices, and we have what we call our pink sheet. It's our core implementation planning tool. And every time we sit down with teachers as a CNI team, that pink sheet is on the table. And all it really, when you boil it all down, it's, it's the assess, plan, teach, revise and revisit, assess, plan, teach. It's the teaching cycle. And so there are different times that different teachers will come in, in different places of it, depending on the work they're working on at that particular time. The framework focuses on not only like unit delivery, but then gets down to the lesson level and what are the instructional strategies that we're using to focus on that, that particular level. So we may be focusing on ELA, we may be focusing on math, but whatever we're focusing on, that pink sheet sits there as kind of our tool and our framework and our reference of where we're moving in and out of. The core, Evergreen Core Instructional Practices has really given us a very strong foundation to be using that sheet. And we've aligned all of it, as well as aligned it with the ONE Plan. So that, that, all that we're doing is all aligned with everything that's in place. So we're really beginning to support those collaborative practices. And again, we have the resources. Now we need to figure out what all is in those resources so that we can be sure we're utilizing those resources to their fullest potential. And so we're really focusing on those ELA, the wonders, the 95%, the my perspectives, and the Intu Math, to make sure that we're really moving student learning forward and we're utilizing all those resources in it. Before we go out and find something to supplement our core, what's in our core that's going to match that for us? And so that's what we're, we're focusing on in terms of our team meetings and all those planning tools around the HQIM. We are also continuing, as Mike said, with the, or as Dr. Jenkins said, with the clarity work. We're really excited with how many, and what we're finding is with the student-centered coaching, which is our next piece, we're, we're continuing to work with Diane on our student-centered coaching. And we have two new coaches this year. And what they're finding is more and more teachers are coming with the clarity to do the learning intentions and success criteria. They're saying it's, it's really making for a strong coaching cycle because there's a foundation to build on all of that. So it's really exciting to kind of see all this work coming together and, and the coaches being able to really get out there and do that. So we'll continue with the coaching cycles. We have two coaches, four coaches at the elementary level. We have two at the middle school, one at each middle school, and then one at the high school. So we're going to be, in terms of the, the technology, we're really kind of trying to utilize, what are those technology resources within our high-quality instructional materials? So how does WAGgle fit with Intu Math? And so before, again, we, we're getting requests for technology programs. Before we bring anything in, we want to make sure that it doesn't already exist in our high-quality instructional materials. So we're, we're digging real deep with that to make sure that we're continuing with that. And we also continue to have our technology coaches in the buildings that are helping us to support that work with the high-quality instructional materials.
Okay, so goal two on the college and career readiness components. We do want to think specifically around the monitoring, increasing the number of students enrolled in AP, CTE, and CCP courses. So last year, we've just continued to increase that. I'll actually show you the numbers in just a moment. But when we think about this year, it actually leads to what we were just talking about, is what is that vertical alignment? So it would be great to see what Toledo is doing. I know Dr. Jenkins called a group of our high school counselors and other stakeholders from the district, including the high school principal, to just start thinking that our courses have to lead to something. You know, that notion of those pathway development, that stackable credentials, even things like students can earn certain credentials even through their science classes, you know, with the three M protective eyewear, right? That's a credential. So we've got to be very intentional.
Hit the OSHA 10 before they graduate, yeah.
They could, right? So that is very intentional. And so when we start doing that course planning guide review, that we've really got to be intentional about that. If it's not leading to one of these three goals, then it might not be something that we need to continue. Like we really, at this point in time, with keeping resources in check, we've got to make sure that it leads to a successful graduation plan. So that really is about auditing and aligning those pathways. And that will ultimately dip down into what students experience in middle school, especially when we start thinking about, you know, pre-CT, CTE courses. I know that the, the exposure component is really in grade seven through 10. That's the, the introductory CTE courses. And then in 11 and 12, you can start getting into like those more specific courses. But we can do a lot within that seven through 10 model with those, those intro courses. Just if we go to the next slide, Dr. Jenkins, we can actually see some of the, the data just around that first part. So I did go back three years to just think about like tracking that AP enrollment. In 22, 23, we had 295 students that were enrolled in AP. In 23, 24, we had 313. And then in 24, 25, we had 313. And then we might be thinking about like, is that stagnant? I think really the question that students have been asking me specifically is like they're intentionally choosing AP and CCP at the same time. And I do think that that's a really important thing, that this is not one or the other. This is the, you know, I always think about the, the balanced nutrition plate, right? Like sometimes, you know, you, it's not like, oh, I'm going to eliminate this part of my plate altogether. It's like you want to be really thoughtful about when do you engage in that part of the plate? And so I, I think it's important to hold this number right with that increase in CCP enrollment. When you look at the bottom line there, in 22, 23, we had 269 students participating in CCP. 23, 24, we had 418 enrollments. And then 24, 25, we had 547 enrollments. So, you know, best case scenario, when you think about this, if students earn three or better, that we're saying, great, then you have met the competency to earn college credit in your AP course. And some students are just saying, yep, I've taken a lot of AP courses, and now I'm actually going to get the college credit through the CCP course. I think there was actually a, a recent study that talked about, you know, kind of diminishing returns after a student has taken three or more AP classes, that it really isn't helping them anymore. So when we get to that spot, it's like, if kids are maxing out, we still want to provide them that opportunity. And I think that students are starting to see that CCP could be that option as well. So we're seeing that go through. We've actually got eight students that are in their junior year of high school, but they're actually going to be half-day on Tri-C's campus. And so, those are the students. There's eight left in the Associate Degree Pathway Program. They are dynamic students. I'd love for you to meet them. They're juniors.
They started seventh grade?
They started in ninth grade.
In ninth grade. So, they're most of the way there.
They are most of the way there. And they're doing really great with the program. I actually think that most of them are very intent on finishing that program. They're excited. They started talking even before they went to Tri-C about like, no, I really want to graduate. I want to get my associate's degree before.
They'll be the first cohort with the double degree.
They're like, oh, we want.
That's what I thought it was going to be. Because they start big, and then it, because they start picking.
Yep. So, it's exciting, and we want to, we want to think about that in terms of like, how do we put all of these things together? Because it's not like AP or CCP or CTE. But like, when students are in all three of those, then I think that's great, too. And some of the students that are continuing in the CCP pathway also are taking CTE programs, too. So, they're in their first year of a CTE program. They're taking college credit on Tri-C's campus. So, it's just, it's a lot logistically, but it's great that we're able to even keep moving this forward. Students are meeting those graduation requirements. They're freeing up time and space in their schedule, and they're interested. So, you know, I know at least three of those eight students are currently enrolled in their first year of a CTE program as well. So, like, they're really, they're focused and they're excited. And I think that that's the best part about it, is seeing students that are excited. You can see, I just don't want to leave out the CTE enrollment component there. So, 189 in 2022, 23, 240 in 23, 24, and then 24, 25, 222. But we know that even just in talking to you guys about the CT enrollment, we know that the programs are moving forward. The high watermark actually was in the 21, 22, when we had two additional programs in CTE that we don't have right now. So, that's the Criminal Justice Program and the Information Technology Program. Both of those programs ended because the teacher retired. So, it's just a matter of thinking about, how does that fit? I know Mr. Bogner's thinking about like those different programs and how we can make sure that we're auditing that. But this gives that snapshot, and it really talks about how we can hold the AP, CTE, and CCP all together and look at them as a group. They also fit very dynamically within the College Career Workforce Military Readiness Component. One of our steps was to track things better this year. But it's also on the student side of things, making sure that we're implementing our PACE framework. We really want to keep track of things in Navion, so that way, students can see from year to year about like their strengths, their interest inventories, their career explorers, all that should be helping to build that profile, that student profile, that student's success plans. And so, this year, Kristin Riley and I are going to be making sure that we've got our district post-secondary committee, where we actually are not just the only ones who are speaking this language, but we need to help building leaders and also liaisons from the building to talk the talk, like, understand what does that mean? We might know it because I'm focused on this graduation rate in the College Career Workforce Military, but it's a lot to hold 11 components still, so people know, how do we get kids to meet one of those 11 components? And that's why we're bringing the post-secondary committee to life, to help out with that work. We're also really excited to think about increasing the 250 hours of work-based learning, because I think that that's really one of the areas that the state is looking for. They want the students to be having those real-life experiences. As part of our participation within the GCCC, which is the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium, we're trying to increase the number of students who have access to those 250 hours of work-based learning, not just in a CTE program. But what does it look like if you are not in a CTE program and we can still give you those experiences? Also, developing pre-apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship programs, so students that understand that they want to do that don't necessarily have to wait until they graduate to start moving in that direction. And we do know that some of our students who really would prefer that, and they're thinking about that as part of their post-secondary plan, might not have had everything together in order to even get into a CTE program in their junior year. Like, you have to be on time and on target in order to get into those CTE programs, and some of our students might still be missing graduation requirements in their sophomore year, which makes it challenging for them to get into those programs in their junior year. So, we need to think about how we create alternative pathways for students to get those pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs.
I have a question. The students who participated in the Tremco After School Club last year?
Yep.
Would that count as one of these CCWMR, too many letters, measures?
So, no, it would not. Not right now. And so, one of the things that we want to develop is that needs to be a pre-apprenticeship program. So, even, you know, even last night, I sent an email off to our partners and said, I need to get this program moving forward, so that way, the students that complete this program earn the pre-apprenticeship. So, it's just a matter of like connecting the dots and making sure. We also had another program called PNC Partner Up. And so, that was really trying to train students for more clerical administrative positions, maybe even at Sherwin-Williams or PNC Bank as bank tellers, but that's not necessarily qualifying either. So, as this measure gets developed, we have to make sure that it counts for something. And that's really the work on Goal Two this year, is to make sure that all of these individual scenarios that we have lead to the apprenticeship, the pre-apprenticeship, or the certification, so students get credit for that.
So, they can become part of the.
Correct.
And that'll entice more to be involved.
Correct. We actually started the Tremco Rising Stars Program again today. So, we have 14 students that are, that were there and ready to go, and we hope to find five more, so we can get closer to that 20 mark.
I'd love some for you.
Exactly.
Sending some students over, okay.
It is. But David Hutchinson from, it's now Rising Stars, is its own nonprofit. He transitioned that from Tremco to a nonprofit organization this last year. But he'll be back with us on Tuesdays and Room 203 from 3:30 until 6:00, in case anybody wants to come up and see the work that the students are doing. They're great.
Do you ever review the test and grade distribution for the AP and CCP? I guess, completion and test scores?
Sure. So, when we get the report, we do look at, I mean, we get the test scores that go along with it. And there usually is an element of data analysis with that. We have lots of students taking lots of AP tests. We also, so yes, we do evaluate that data. If there's some, I'd love to hear some thoughts about what we might be able to look for to give you.
I'd just be curious to see students who earn, you know, a three or better, and also for CCP enrollment, students who would earn like a C or better.
Correct. So, like a correlation between like the test score and the credit or the grade?
Or not necessarily even a correlation, just the data.
Yeah, we were trying to pull the AP data. They changed something in terms of how you access it, and it's my, I, there's, I have to call AP, basically. I thought I could email, and I couldn't get in it. So, we're working on trying to get it to pull it out, so we can share.
It would be also interesting to see it differentiated from their first AP class to their not-first AP class, because it can be a real.
That first one is pretty shocking.
A real wake-up call.
Bob, I love how you're thinking on this. I love the idea of pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships. I love the emphasis on AP, CCP, CTE, and understanding that it's not one or the other, that it's a continuum, and kids might want to do a little bit of all of them. You know, one of the things that I can say as a parent whose kid did take AP and CCP, it's really nice when your kid goes into college and already has a bunch of credits. You know, number one, that might be, if your kid knows what they want to do, that might be less money you have to pay. And even if your child doesn't know yet what they want to do, it opens up a lot of room in their schedule to try a lot of different things and to have a very rich college experience where they can take different classes just because they're interested in it, and really take advantage of a time in your life you might not have the opportunity to do that. And I think if kids knew the benefit that that would bring them in the future, that they might be more willing to challenge themselves and their parents as well. Because often, what I hear is sometimes, it's not the kids. The kids want to take the harder classes, the parents don't want them to. The parents are worried that maybe they're in too many other activities, and they're not going to do good, and a parent might have a misguided belief that, well, an A in an easier class is better than a B in a harder class. And that's not necessarily better when you're looking at the next step.
It also relieves some pressure in that first semester.
Oh, absolutely.
When your first, you know, your first semester of college, 15 credits could be overwhelming, you know? So, if you're at 12 or 13, you know?
Right.
And you have a few credits that you've already earned, that that could be a good pace for someone.
And priority registration.
Yep. Those are all good points, Gabe.
There's a whole nother component of students that may not have been ready to start college immediately after high school. But we are actually trying to develop, well, we're working on developing that partnership with an organization called Modern States. And this is all about giving students access to CLEP exams, which are college-level examinations. So, even if you're not ready to go enroll in Tri-C, you're not ready to do 15, 18, you can start that. And actually, even families can start that, too. So, if a family member hasn't pursued their college degree, their first year of college, the Modern States and the CLEP protocols allow students and families to start that right now, free of charge. Take a class or two, take an exam, get the credit, and hopefully, build that bridge to Tri-C or to Cleveland State University and start, you know, I love the Tri-C motto, I'm, you know? But like, it's time just to take that next step, right? It's time just to level up, just take one more step, take a couple of classes. And I think that all comes back, and we want to support students beyond when they're with us, but then also give them some resources to continue on that journey when it gets lonely. Like, there's a lot of our students right now that graduated where they're feeling lonely right now, because in this journey, this college journey, like, it's hitting them right now that like, school's hard, life is hard, I'm balancing lots of things, and they're away from home, or they could be away from home. So, this is just, there's a lot that goes into this college, career, workforce, military readiness. I know we get a rate, but we also think that each time that we don't get a rate with that student, like, it's a student that's not prepared. That's the bigger issue. So, we want to just wrap around some of those services and connect them with some programs. So, that's the hard work that we've got ahead of us.
One of the other things I know we didn't talk about here, but being able to see the senior projects. I like the way that, you know, we've changed senior projects over the years, and I like the way that they're being done now. One of the best days I had this year was going and listening to the kids talk about their senior projects. And there were a couple of kids who did, you know, they had enlisted in the military, but it was related, you know, they did a senior project related to the fact that they had enlisted in the military. And it was fascinating, just to see the excitement that they had about what they were going to do, and that they had a next step, and they had a plan. It was terrific. The senior projects were great.
That's great. Thanks, Jody. We appreciate that feedback.
What are their names? We need them for CTE.
I don't remember their names. There was a young man and a young woman. The young woman who did her project as a, in the dispatch.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was like a whole nice team that was, they were in the CTE program, but they were all pursuing like police or fire, EMT. They did a really nice job, and they worked together. So, it was, it was great.
Bob, do you have a general sense for CCP, how many of those courses are happening inside of our buildings versus at Tri-C?
Yes, I do. The majority of them right now are happening inside of our building. So, we have got, there's only three classes, actually, two classes that students are taking as part of the associate degree, they're taking off-campus. And then, there's probably 50, no, probably not even that. I can get you the breakdown, but you can tell, like, it's the enrollment in the classes that are offered at Heights, or that they are doing off-campus work at Tri-C, they're in the associate pathway, or they might not be. I think we only have three universities right now that students are taking CCP classes. Sometimes, they'll come up for Semester Two and go to Cleveland State, but I can get you that information, a breakdown. I actually created a CCP dashboard in previous years, and so, I'll share that back again so we can see it over time.
Cool.
Thank you.
All right, I think it's back to our friends in Student Services.
It is. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am here to talk about special populations within Goal Two, and I really just want to start off with a timeline. So, historically, back in the school year 2017, 2018, our district joined forces with the ESC and started work through their least restrictive environment cohort. So, that's LRE, and that's really what this work focuses on, and that's the why to what I'm going to talk about, because we want to make sure that our students with disabilities have access to the general education curriculum to the greatest amount possible, with the caveat, like Ms. Liddell Anderson mentioned earlier, that's an IEP team decision, right? So, when they talk about where their services will be provided in Section Seven of that IEP, that's a team decision. But we know that our students, we want them to be sitting in front of those content area experts with the supports and accommodations from those access experts, meaning the intervention specialists, okay? So, if you look down there at the bottom of the slide, in the school year 2016, 2017, 36.06% of our students with disabilities were receiving services in that general education setting. And this relates back to one of those 54 indicators that Karen spoke about. So, this is indicator 5A specifically. So, the data is always a year behind, so that was reported on the 2017, 2018 report card. Right now, currently, you'll see that we are at a 61.4%. And due to the wonderful data department that we have, led by the Ms. Byrd, she created us a data view that can provide real-time information as a district and per building where we at with our students with disabilities being serviced in that general education setting. So, right now, if I were to pull it up, it would tell me 61% out of our 1,021 students with disabilities, that they will be serviced in that general education setting. On the last state, or the special education profile, which was the 23, 24 data, we were at 58.53%. So, each year, we are continuing to see growth, which is really exciting to see. Kudos to the teams in the buildings, too, for really implementing and making sure that we are offering those full continuum of services within the building, so it's not just all a pull-out model. We have teachers going in to co-teach, going in to run small groups, so that we're able to offer those variety of services. So, moving forward, we'll continue with our IEP compliance training and just really making sure that those IEP goals are standards-based. I know you hear that a lot from us, but we want to make sure that they are addressing where those students should be to reach their grade-level peers and their performance. We have the IEP compliance calibration. So, myself and Erin Hannah, who has the elementary and preschool, so we have used, we use the IEP checklist that the state provides, so it's based on their auditing procedures, and we go through and run monthly calibrations to make sure that they're writing those standards-based IEPs. This year, we're also focusing a lot on math, and I have that listed here later on. But we've, we've had a collaboration with the CNI team over the past two years. That's really grown, because we want everybody to know that we're all here to support all students, and that ties in nicely, too, with that Goal Two. Let's see, new team co-teaching training, so that's offered at the beginning of the school year for any new co-teaching teams. I'm also available to go out and support teams in any of the buildings. I've had principals ask me to come out and work with specific teams, so that is an option for everyone. And then, looking at the gifted lens of things, they've offered co-teaching strategies and critical thinking lessons at the elementary and middle school levels. And then, something that I'm really excited about, and I invite you guys to come check it out when it is up and fully functioning at the high school, so we were able to hire an additional intervention specialist that's leading a new job training program at the high school. And both programs now, so Ms. Quetta Tucker was, or is the transition coordinator that always did the job training program for students with disabilities, so they're in the community. With the closure of CEVEC, we needed to find placements for our students with more intensive needs. We were able to hire a new teacher. She's phenomenal. They actually went to their first job site today. So, that's just our 11th graders that are in her program. But with these two programs, we are also able to offer the 250 hours of work-based learning with Ohio means jobs readiness seal. So, we're still trying to track some down that Bob uncovered from last year, but we'll have those by the end of the month. So, that's a really exciting thing, and they are revamping the Tiger Store. And the Roar's Coffee Shop will be opening on the first Friday of October, I think that's the third. So, the students came up with a new logo. We're having a meeting with Ms. Angel tomorrow to talk about electronic payments for the store, because that's been a barrier, but all student-led. So, it's really great what they are doing, and just the excitement that this new, her name is Amanda Aguirre, and she's been a fabulous addition to the high school and our job training program.
Would you let us know when the cafe opens?
Yes, October 3rd.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Oh, yes. Yes, I will.
Yeah, assuming all goes.
And the Tiger Shop.
And the Tiger Shop is, anytime we have families in for a public event, concerts, shows, whatever, they want that thing open.
Oh, they do.
Because that's a huge opportunity to.
Buy stuff.
Well, no, to actually, you know, practice what you're learning, to sell things.
I was talking about from the consumer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To sell things. The students can sell things to all these exciting family members who are here for whatever it is, right?
Sorry.
You want them to buy stuff.
Well, we need them to buy stuff when we're able to offer electronic payments, because that's really, it's hard right now, because a lot of people don't carry cash anymore.
Correct.
And so kids never have cash. So whether we do something through, like, Infinite Campus, they put money on their account or whatnot, but that's been a barrier to the store, not the coffee shop.
And Allison, don't you put another thing on Infinite Campus?
Sorry. All right, so we are making great gains in this area.
Wonderful.
So I heard you say the number, a thousand twenty-four students.
Twenty-one.
One thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
And then if you include our non-public families, that's one thousand three hundred and thirty-six.
And we, we serve the non-publics?
We do not, so they're able, they're able to access the scholarship through our district.
Got it.
We provide them an IEP with our offer of a free and appropriate public education, and they take that and do with that what they wish.
Right, gotcha. So it's always interesting to me, because that, basically, the one thousand twenty-one calculates to about twenty-two percent of our student, overall student population. And I'd just like to sort of say this out loud, because I think people need to understand that statewide, around seventeen percent of public school students receive special education services, and our number is higher, not because we have a higher density of students with special needs, but because fewer students who don't have those needs are attending our schools, because they're using private schools. And so sometimes our district gets a reputation as being a district that spends too much money, and that is, just the opposite is actually true. But because of the larger percentage of our students who receive special ed services, it costs more to educate our students. Special ed students have legitimate needs that require additional services. And so I just think that it's, this is a great opportunity to remind people of the fact that we have a larger percentage of students receiving special education services, and those special education services cost more money to deliver. And furthermore, for the first time in Ohio's history, with the Fair School Funding Program, which was only implemented in name, not in substance, but for the first time in Ohio history, special education services were calculated in the Fair School Funding Program, which provided funding, student-specific funding, based on special education services. Unfortunately, we have a legislature that did not fulfill the promises of the Fair School Funding Program as Representatives Cup and Patterson had designed it. So hopefully, that will happen in the future, but it is more expensive to educate our kids, because more of our kids are receiving the services that they greatly deserve. Thank you for that number.
I also think there might be some other overlap between you two, not in addition to the jobs program, but if any of those students do decide to pursue higher education, there are accessibility services that students can still, you know, use if they do decide to, you know, attend somewhere such as TRIC.
Sure.
Boya?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Last but not least, so we're going to go back and talk about some components that have to do with the report card. So our strategic plan goal was for us to increase our performance levels on the report card. And so I'm not going to read all these to you, but want you to understand some of the things we did in order so we could grow. So one of the things, one of the most important things we did is we partnered with the data team. And we were able to get lots of data and information, because it was important to me, as Lindsay said, the why, that the teachers understood why they were doing what they were doing, because I don't think they did. They were just doing it because they were told, or doing it because. So as we had monthly data meetings, and Ms. Byrd and her team came down, and, and we've done, they had files and reports, and we're pulling data. I even did a scavenger hunt with them when we came back from school. They were not happy with me, but it was.
Sounds like clarity.
A scavenger hunt to find data, in order so they could look at how students grow. So that was one important thing that we did. I attended meetings virtually across the state with other gifted coordinators, because it was important that we found out with these new operating standards coming out, that what other districts were doing, and were we aligning with them? Did they have any ideas we could use? And lo and behold, we found out that we were basically on target in doing what we needed to do to move forward, to grow. But one of those, some of those things, we had to tighten up, so we had WAPs and WAPs. So a WAP is a written education plan for servicing gifted students, and a WAP is just a written acceleration plan. You don't have to be gifted to get a WAP. A WAP is if you're taking an advanced-level course, and you're accelerated, formally accelerated. And so we had to keep track of those, because when we keep track of them and turn them into EMIS, that actually increases scores on our report card. So we had, we were learning little things to make sure that we were being specific about what we were doing. We made sure that our rosters were verified. We probably checked those twenty times last year, so unlike a classroom teacher whose roster is handed to them, the gifted teachers have to build their rosters and check them as new students are IDed or students leave, and we were finding out that some students might have slipped through a crack. So when we're turning it over to the data team to, to be reported to EMIS, if we missed a student, there was a point we might have lost. So we literally checked rosters twenty times last year. One of the other important things that we did was we progress-monitored our students. So if they took an OST or a MAP test, they, we were charting it, we were reviewing it at meetings, we were looking at their projected score and how they would do. And then in addition to that, we were creating lesson plans off of their MAP projections, looking at their strengths and weaknesses, and creating lessons and going back and reteaching things, or creating units for the areas that they were struggling in, so we could target those areas. And that ended up being a huge growth for us, especially with reading. And there are some other things that we did, but in essence, this helped us to move forward, and so for our goals and our steps for this coming year, we're going to continue that practice, because it was beneficial for us. But one thing we also looked at was high school. So Bob has already talked about, you know, AP and honor students. One of the things we found that although we offer AP, some of our, our gifted students of color were taking more honors courses than they were taking AP. So we needed to increase what service looked like, not only for those students, but increased service at the high school, because we had about two-hundred-and-seventy students there that were IDed, and we weren't connecting with even half of them. So looking at the honors courses and seeing what professional development we can offer our honors teachers, this year, we're trying to increase service thirty percent, at least at the high school, by training those honors teachers and doing WAPs for those students in the honors classes, and that's the majority of where our students of color are. So moving forward with that, and then on, oh, I have it, sorry. And on the next portion of the state report card had to do with identification. And just for your knowledge, right now, we don't have all the WAPs open and all the students loaded up, but for purposes of IC, we have approximately seven-hundred-and-fifteen gifted students in the district. Like I said, that number's fluid. Out of the seven-hundred-and-fifteen that we have, we serve approximately six-hundred-and-thirty-two of them, so that, that's pretty good. And out of those students, three-hundred-and-fifty-three are white, and then three-hundred-and-sixty-two are children of color. So we are really doing better and working on who, who we're identifying and helping to service. So as you look at the state report card, gifted identification and services, so this is a plethora of different points in which the district can, can earn points in order to increase measures, or make the indicator on the state report card. So you can have a total of a hundred-and-forty points, and that includes different things like the grade levels we ID in, the type of IDs we have, the type of services that we have and offer, and what representation looks like, not only for what representation looks like for our gifted students as compared to our student population, but also economically, and again, our underrepresented groups. So when you look at the chart for over the last three years, we have, the measures were always moving, so that made a lot of school districts nervous, because they thought if we made it, now we got to figure out how to make it again the next year. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, we did make that measure out of a hundred-and-forty points. We earned a hundred and two. The measure was at seventy percent, so we met it. Then the, the year after that, twenty-three, twenty-four, again, a hundred-and-forty points, and we grew in our points, but the measure moved. So it moved to eighty percent, and we missed it by seven-tenths of a point, so we did not meet that indicator last year. So lo and behold, glad the report card data came out this week. As we are getting this, this data, we have moved again, the indicator is now at eighty. We have increased our scores, and we did meet the indicator at eighty point seven, so we met that on the state report card, and you can see the increases that we had for gifted identification and services with all the different points. And then on the next chart, we get to talk about value-added for gifted. So as you look, again, look at the chart, it's over, it's a compilation of three years. They don't just look at, at one year by itself. So our compilation is the first year, we, and the growth, and the whole purpose of this is to show growth for gifted students. So your scoring needs to be anything higher than, than a negative two to show growth on their identification and, and how they did on the OSTs that relate to their specific gifted identification. So when you look at this, the first year, we were at a two-point-six, so we had four stars. And then twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a negative two-point, two-point-one-three, so we did not grow. We actually went backwards, and so we received two stars last year, and we did not meet that indicator. So for this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, again, it's a compilation of all three. So for the, the current year, they, they compute this by using fifty percent of that year's growth, and then twenty-five percent of the other two years to get their measure. We did make it, so we were at three-point-oh-eight for the overall composition, so we met our value-added for this year, and we received four stars. But our actual current measure, just, just for this year, we received, we received five stars for gifted. So that was to, able to help contribute to the district on the report card, and we want to continue these measures and make sure that we're doing everything we can to grow and to contribute to the district.
Not, not discounting at all the importance of the, the report card score. You know, we, we've, I know the district has, we've done a root cause analysis and have really worked to improve access and equity amongst our identification process, and, you know, we're fifty-fifty-ish, you know, white and students of color in our IDs right now. Another thing that I'm interested in, and you sort of mentioned it, is the economic factor, and, like, Allison, I'm looking back at you. I'd be really interested to, because we, I mean, we don't have good data on how much our families make, but we do know where they live, like, what census tracts they live in. Cleveland Heights and University Heights has around twenty census tracts, which is, like, smaller than a zip code. It's like your walkable neighborhood, roughly, and it's, the US Census Bureau provides those. But there's also census data around those, so you have, like, you know, median income and all of that. It'd be really interesting to also, at some point, take a look at our identification, and are we identifying kids who are living in higher-income neighborhoods more often? So, so not just, you know, race and ethnicity demographics, but also the economic demographics of, if your family has, my, my supposition here is if your family has more money, there will be stronger advocates, and they might be pressuring a teacher to, you know, do another test, or.
Five times.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's, it's the, just trying to, like, yeah, advocate five times.
So that was something that used to happen here. We're finding more and more, because that was one of the pushes, again, that we worked on, because if you don't have fifteen or more students, gifted students within your school, your, your, the scores don't count. They don't calculate anything. So last year, we were able to make sure that we had students identified in every single one of our buildings, and we're growing that. It's been a while since we presented on this, but we use PETS, premier education thinking skills. We purposely started that with, when Lisa Hussein was in, in gifted, because we wanted her to be the, the first face, and she was going out and visiting the classrooms and doing these classes, and doing small groups and, and whole groups, and that started our numbers. We were identifying students, in particular, students of color and economically, in the different buildings, that we didn't have any identified students before. So now we have students at, at Oxford, we have students at Noble. We're getting students in buildings that we didn't have before. So to your case in point, I, I don't have specific statistics in front of me, but we are growing these numbers, and we are identifying those students, because PETS has helped us. We don't get all those parent referrals anymore, like, like you're indicating, and we really don't get teacher referrals. So a lot of our referrals for identification are coming from teaching PETS and going into the classroom and observing the students and how they interact, and the problem-solving skills and that, that, that we're picking up from observing them in the small and large groups.
Awesome.
And of course, there's also the intersection between students who are identified as gifted and students with special needs. And so that becomes another group of, of kids who will benefit from extra support so that they can thrive. And back to Dan's point, those students need extra services, they deserve extra services, they have the right to them, and those are expensive. But we need to make sure that all students are receiving the supports they need. And I think it was in one of your slides, Bob, something about providing supports for students in honors classes. That hits home for me, because I saw both of my kids flounder at high school, at the beginning of high school, when all of a sudden, I say, oh, they're in the higher-level classes, and they actually have to do some work. Now, in the case of my kids, I know that they were being lazy, but they could have benefited from some extra help with figuring out how to be organized, how to plan your time, so that you're not doing last-minute stuff at the end, that kind of thing.
I can even say shout-out, especially to Oxford, because there are some teachers over there, some of the special ed teachers there, putting their students up for the referrals to be tested, and they have been, been identified. So, so working with them to understand that we are not here just for the, the rich kids or the ones whose parents are advocating. We are here for all students to support, and we are getting more students identified, and again, to give them the support that they need.
Do you think there has been a, a culture shift? I mean, to me, it sounds like you're saying that teachers weren't doing this before, but they're doing it now.
Teachers, some of the teachers still are putting in referrals.
I mean, to me, it sounds like you're saying that teachers weren't doing this before, but they're doing it now.
Teachers, some of the teachers still aren't putting in referrals, and that's okay. We have more gifted teachers teaching pets now than just one person. So as they're going in there, and some people are getting more acclimated, and they work with them, because there's a data sheet that gets filled out by the classroom teacher when the gifted teacher is in there doing pets. It's a different form of the co-teaching, because it's one teach, one observe that we're doing. So they're learning more about their students, because we teach a little differently, so what they might see in their classroom as regards to how their teaching is different than what they might have seen with us. So they're picking up things, and again, we're having more gifted teachers being able to go out in kindergarten, first and second grade, and pinpointing students that we wouldn't have picked up before. So it's a shift in who is turning in the referrals.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank our presentation team tonight, Mike, Lindsay, Bob, Toya, Hannah, Allison, Karen. Did I miss anyone? Thank you all for sharing the work that you're doing to support our staff as they support our students towards academic achievement. There's a whole lot going on in a lot of different places, and everyone has worked hard this past year, continues to work hard, our teachers, our classroom support staff, everyone who works in our buildings, folks in central office. So thank you. I appreciate the intentionality and approach, and also everyone's commitment to always trying to improve and to hear what's working, what's not working with our systems and supports. So thank you very much.
Yeah, wonderful presentation.
This has been very, very interesting.
Thank you for answering all of our questions. I know we had a lot tonight.
And it's also very clear, as you pass off to each other, how it's not siloed, the work that you're doing, that you guys are really working together, and it's a cohesive effort, so that's just really great to see. I just thank you for everything. I just want to thank the team. They put a lot of work into this, and their leadership, their dedication to students and their work. So I'm really proud of all the work that's been done, and I'm looking forward to the work ahead, so, and thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
My second.
Any discussion?
Let's adjourn.
Ms. Lee, we've had enough discussion for one night.
Mr. Heinz?
Mr. Heinz?
Say again. What did I do?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajja?
Yes, she was just calling.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you.